Mr. Rosen.
We're ready.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Appeals. See, first of all, can we ask town clerk to do a roll call?
Sure. Member Gordon, Secretary Rosen, Member Weiss, Vice Chairperson Thoransson, and Chairperson Rosen, Town Attorney Rubin,
Here.
and Town Planner Allen.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, could we stand up and have a pledge of allegiance by me?
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Are there any changes to the agenda? No, okay. I make a motion, we approve the agenda, all in favor. It's time to swear in public. For those giving testimony to the application on this agenda, please stand, raise your right hand, be sworn by the town clerk.
By the authority as a notary, by the authority as a notary of the state authority, do you swear affirm that this testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. We need the approval of the minutes from January 21st. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the January 21st meeting? Hearing none, I make a motion, we approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you. Okay. New business. Okay, we have an application from Maria and I believe it's Steven. Gotcha. Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Okay. Do any board members have any ex parte communications to disclose? Okay, this time we'd like to open this meeting for the public hearing. Town Planner Allen, please present your recommendations regarding the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant indicated he wished to go first. So we're gonna, since it's the applicant's appeal, we're gonna let the applicant go first, or the appellant, as the case may.
That agenda would have to be changed by the town or company. No?
It's on the agenda that way?
Does anybody object?
Oh, yeah, no, it's, but you don't have to formally change the agenda. We're just gonna change the order of presentation.
All right.
Okay, thank you. All right, good morning. Pleasure to be here. My name is Michael Marshall. I'm with Nelson Mullins Law Firm. Our address is 1905 Northwest Corporate Boulevard in Boca Raton. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for rescheduling this meeting and getting us on the agenda so soon after the prior meeting, and also accommodating travel schedules over the summer. So we do really appreciate that you are able to get this meeting sorted for us in such short times. We really appreciate that. This issue is really, I think it's quite simple. We mean, we'll spend some time talking about it, but it really boils down to, you know, an interpretation of how the town code treats gazebos and where gazebos can be located. Staff, you know, staff has taken a position, their interpretation, that the code doesn't expressly regulate where what the locational requirements are for a gazebo. A gazebo is defined in the code. It's mentioned in one other location, but other than that, other than recognizing what a gazebo is and defining it, and it doesn't provide an explicit setback requirement in the code. And for that reason, staff has interpreted the code as being, well, if it doesn't talk about it, then it's not mentioned, then it's regulated to the most stringent degree, which is in this case, just defaults to the same setbacks that apply to the main structure on the property, which is, in this case, a home. So essentially, if you want to have a gazebo, you've got to eliminate your part of your home. You can't, you have to put the gazebo in the building footprint somewhere, in that building envelope. It can't be in the yard. So we, you know, we find that first, it does seem somewhat strange that you wouldn't have, commonly considered a necessary structure that belongs in your yard, in this case, can't be. But also, we suggest to you that, or we do want to persuade you that the code actually does provide for language that will guide staff in how to determine where a gazebo should be located. There are other types of yard structures, other types of cabanas, dune walkover structures. There are other types of walls, fences, hedges, all sorts of yard accessory structures that are allowed in the yard and at different places. In some places, some cases, there's a rigid requirement. In other places, it's left to the discretion of staff in determining where's the most appropriate place for it. And there is a catch-all provision that talks about customary yard structures. The code just refers to customary yard structures, and it says that they are subject to height requirements. Obviously, it can't be higher than structures that are allowed on the property, and also site triangle requirement. So if you're in the front yard, you know, the corner where there's an intersection, you know, you can't place it in the site triangle, right? So, but otherwise, it can shift in the yard. It could be located in the yard wherever staff thinks appropriate through a plan review. So you can, so again, so the issue really is whether or not a gazebo is maybe placed in the yard. One more time, thank you. So I, just to give you an idea of the home itself, where it's located, here we have the address 2474 South Ocean. It's on the intercoastal waterway. If there's, go to the next slide. Next slide zooms on a bit, and you can see in the circle there, a small roofed structure, and that's the gazebo we're talking about here. Okay, thank you so much. Use the middle? Yeah, yeah, right here, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so that, that's, so just so you have an idea of what we're talking about and what it looks like and where it is and what it's adjacent to. It's along the intercoastal waterway. It's off the back of the seawall. There's a barrister, there's a railing along the seawall. It's a back patio area. And then the gazebo, this is what it looks like. It sits in the backyard like this. It's not adjacent to any property line, or it's not close to any property line shared with another residence. This is where it is, it's located on the survey. It's, you see the structures in yellow, and it is situated four feet from the property line. The other setbacks, the side, the front, all of those, they're nowhere near the adjacent properties. It's just four feet off the rear line, which is the intercoastal waterway. I don't know if we need to go through all this, but just in case you were wondering how we got here, it's kind of a, it's a sort of a tortured process, but the gazebo was, 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 was under permit review whenever the contractor, there was an unfortunate situation. We could talk about it, I don't know if it's really relevant to the issue, but just to help give you context again, there was, contractor had became ill, went through various treatments during the autumn while this permit application was pending. A third-party contractor had been hired to install this structure. They came in and installed it. No one was aware of that, that there was still the question about the setback that was being discussed or being raised by staff. And so after, you know, once the structure was in place, then a code enforcement matter started because it was a structure that was erected without a permit. And obviously, we want a permit. There was a permit application pending, but the question is whether or not the permit can be approved as the structure was proposed and has since been erected, or whether it needs to be relocated to some other place, or whether it needs some other type of approval, like a variance approval. So it's kind of, the permit application is kind of suspended in limbo now while we continue and get to the bottom of the discussion. It should have been had sooner, which is, what is a setback requirement, if any, on gazebos? So just to illustrate the issue, I don't know how to get rid of the controls at the top, but we're just trying, this is, this is what we propose. The code allows that the gazebo could be in the yard. And this is what staff isn't saying, is that the gazebo needs to be within the principal building footprint. Staff's interpretation is based on a section of the code. Section, I can't see it here. Was it? I believe it's 3066. Oh, there you go. Yes. Yeah, should be. And I can read to you, but this section says, it begins, it talks about encroachments in the setbacks in certain zoning districts. The zoning district this property is located is one of them. And it starts by saying, unless otherwise provided in the code, then the following structures are allowed in the side or rear required setbacks. And so it goes through and talks about elements of the principal structure. Roof overhangs, air conditioning condensers, pool heaters, walkways that attach to the single-family home, stairs that attach to the single-family home, devices like electrical meters and fuse boxes that are attached to the home, canopies, things that are, these are encroachments of the principal structure into the yard, right? It's, so it's like, so it gives some flexibility on certain elements of the structure where it's not strictly held to the 20-foot or 15-foot, whatever the setback requirement is. So this is talking about elements of the main structure. And when the application was submitted, and again, this is, you know, it's something's become incredibly important that in retrospect seemed like it shouldn't have been, but the application referred to the structure as a pergola. Pergola is kind of a, like, common term. You know, the code, the town code doesn't have a definition of pergola. Nowhere in the town code is it talking about pergulas. And so what is, you know, what is a pergola? People define pergulas in all kinds of ways. If you look at it, you know, they can be where they hang off of a structure. They could be a freestanding structure. Usually, their lattice then allow for, like, climbing vines, you know? It's, pergola is just sort of a garden, right, you know, upon a ten. It's just, it's not a term of art, right? But if you, but if you look in the, and so, if you're looking at this, at this part of pergola, and you try to think, well, how does the code address pergulas? Well, the structure's got to, there's no pergola in the code, so this structure's got to be something else. And the code provides a definition for gazebo, which this meets exactly. But nonetheless, whether it's gazebo or pergola, the fact that neither one of them are listed here is one of the things that may encroach into the setback, like a roof overhang, or a balcony, or a bay window. Since it's not listed, then that means it can't do it, according to staff. So it just, they just say, well, it's not, it's not listed, so it's not allowed, right? Of course, this begins, this section begins by saying, unless otherwise provided in the code. And the code has a whole other section, 3068, in its supplemental regulations that regulate accessory structures. Obviously, other things are not listed here either, such as dune walkover structures, swimming pool cabanas. So there are other things that can be in the yard. This is referring to elements of the main structure. The gazebo that we have here today is a freestanding structure. So, so you need to continue reading the code. You just can't stop at this one section.
Powerpoint has frozen up.
Sorry.
I don't know, maybe a little bit of this mood.
Like, what is this? Okay. Okay. So the, so can I use this? Okay. So again, just to, again, this is technically, it might be in common parlance, a pergola, but for purposes of the code, it's not a pergola. There's no definition of pergola, again. It's not attached to the principal structure, like those encroachments that we're reading from that section that staff relies on. It is, and this is a code definition of accessory structure, which is defined as a detached building, and a building being any structure that's, that's attached to the ground more than 30 inches above finished grade. So this is an accessory structure. Question is, what type of accessory structure? And when you look at the definitions of accessory structures, again, you have a cabana, which it sounds like a cabana, other than the fact it's not necessarily related to a swimming pool, right? This is not like a cabana by a pool or a cabana on a dock. This is a gazebo, an open-styled, single-level accessory structure, having a floor, a roof, but no full walls, which may or may not have electrical service. So it's a gazebo. So how does the code regulate gazebos? If you look at that section I was referring to, section 3068, it has, it talks about swimming pools and cabanas. It talks about fences and walls. It talks about marine facilities, like boathouses and docks and dock structures. Dune walkover structures and gazebos are all listed in there, and the locational criteria for all of them vary. And like I said, the only mention of gazebo aside from a definition is this one section here that it says, "Dune walkovers and gazebos are considered expendable structures and are not subject to the time limits established in here." That's because it's in a section dealing with temporary structures. And so there's like a time limit on temporary structures. Then it goes, "Dune walkovers and gazebos are considered structures, and a building permit is required prior to construction." So in other words, you got to get a building permit. I had no question with that, we, no issue with that. We had a building permit application pending. We want it to be issued. But cause of the question of, can it be located where it's located, is preventing the issues of that building permit. So again, it, you know, dune walkovers, if you look at where they can be located, we go to, dune walkovers, it says that the setbacks can be waived by the building official. And interestingly, dune walkover structures are spoken about in conjunction with gazebos. The difference here is this is an oceanfront property, right? It's along the intercoastal, so there are no dunes. But the point is, is that you could have a gazebo at your property line, where the dunes are. Just like here, we're saying, you could have a gazebo on the intercoastal waterway. It's not near anybody. It's up to, it's just like you could do with your swimming pool, just like you do with a cabana. Screen enclosures that are actually, you know, these are like the Florida rooms. Screen enclosures that are attached to the back of the house, they can go all the way out to six feet from the property line. Right? So they're allowed in the yard, and they're massive, much bigger than this gazebo. So, so, so I guess the conclusion is that the code clearly allows for accessory structures. You're not limited just to that section that talks about encroachments from overhangs and projections from the main structure. And even that section begins by saying, unless otherwise provided in the code. Gazebos are a necessary structure. They are customarily found in yards. And if I go back here, that section I was telling you about where it says fences, walls, poles, vegetation, other customary yard accessories, pool decks, ornaments, and furniture may be permitted in the yard subject to height limitations and visibility requirements. So we're, so our interpretation is actually based on language in the code. This is a customary yard structure, yard structure. There's no other provision in the code that, that would conflict with this section here that it may be permitted subject to height limitations and visibility requirements. There's no explicit four feet, six feet, like it is with screen enclosures. It's a necessary yard structure. It's customary. It's a gazebo. It belongs in the yard. The code allows for it to be placed in the yard without specification subject to a requirement that it get a building permit. We're actually reading the code, and we're reading it according to canons of interpretation where, this isn't showing, but I can tell you what it would show. And that is that, first off, you're not supposed to add or ignore language in a code. You're supposed to read a code in total, right? Which, that's the whole text canon. So in this case, staff is ignoring the beginning of the section they rely on, which says, unless otherwise provided in this code. They just looked at that section and nowhere else. They also, the omitted case canon, whereas, you know, you don't add text to a code, right? And so you can't invent, you can't, there's no requirement by default. Again, land development regulations, and this is well-established Florida law, land development regulations cut against property rights, right? It is a derogation of private property rights. And for that reason, when land development regulations are ambiguous and are subject to more than one reading, they're always read in favor of the use of land, in favor of constitutionally protected property rights. And so again, to the extent, even if we say that it's ambiguous here, it doesn't, we don't know. Gazebos aren't specifically referred to as a setback requirement. Well, you can't then just say, well, I guess we'll resolve that ambiguity in favor of some draconian 20-foot setback requirement that essentially requires you to cannibalize part of your single-family home to have a gazebo. So I, it really is, it's, there's a lot of explanation there. It's a very, you know, rigorous sort of statutory analysis that you go through for stuff like this, makes it kind of difficult to present. But it really just boils down to whether or not your code gives, can be interpreted in ways that come to a logical conclusion, which is that you could have a gazebo in your yard. And then, you know, what exactly is the process for approving it and the location requirements? And in this case, there is no specific location requirements. If anything, it's like dune walkover structures that are subject to the discretion of the building official through the building permit process. And so we respectfully request that you would embrace our interpretation such that this gazebo can be permitted where it's located. It's four feet from the rear property line, which is the seawall, the intercoastal. It's not adjacent to any other single-family homes. It's not casting shadows on anybody. It's not a visual obstacle to anything from adjacent properties. It is completely benign. There's no public life safety issue here. It's where you typically find gazebos, especially along, along, like, waterfronts, where you really want to use your waterfront, maximize your waterfront. That's why you live there. So, so we believe that a gazebo should be, can maybe be permitted where it's currently located, and we would like nothing more than that permit to be issued as soon as possible so that then we can then go through the process of having it closed out properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. It's time for Ms. Allen to make a presentation. Our town planner? Not yet.
Okay, good morning. For the record, Ingrid Allen, Town Planner. I was going to provide for you all an overview of the staff report, which actually starts on page nine of your packets. Mr. Marshall already provided some of the aerials, and I do like to start the presentation looking at the aerials of one that are provided in your packet are a little bit different than the ones provided by Mr. Marshall. So we'll, we'll look at those. Those aerials start on page 55 of your packet. Stay with me one second while I get this PowerPoint. Ready? There we go. Okay, so here you have obviously the property in question. I've gone ahead and provided a red dash line so you could see the property lines. And then right here in the corner, a little bit hard to see from here, but that little square there, that is the accessory structure in question today. Obviously, this aerial view of the property here, you have South Ocean Boulevard, and of course, the intercoastal here. So here is a zoomed-in aerial of the rear of the property. Again, this is the intercoastal waterway, so we're actually facing eastward. And here you could see that accessory structure a little bit more clearly. And here you have a photograph that was provided by our town senior building inspector. This was taken back on December 22nd of 2023. Now, I do provide a bit of property history at the top of page 10. I won't go into all of that, but I did want to provide clarity on one particular date here. I mentioned that on January 6th, excuse me, January 19th of 2024, the permit was canceled by the town's building official, citing that the pergola was built without a permit. I just wanted to clarify, it was not the permit itself because it was not issued at that point. It was the permit application was canceled. So I just wanted to provide that clarity. And also, right below that, I mentioned about the code enforcement board meeting. I just wanted to provide an update for you because I did mention that the applicant was going before the code enforcement board on July 9th. I just wanted to let the board know that at that July 9th code enforcement board meeting, the board did provide an extension to come into compliance to October 10th of 2024. So at the bottom of page 10, I provide you the definition of accessory structure. Mr. Marshall provided the same. And on the top of page 11, I've provided that section that talks about encroachments. So this particular section, 30-6862, this provides permitted encroachments for accessory uses. I think I have the, that's the actual survey. Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to provide you the survey as well. I've gone ahead, again, the survey is also in your packets. It starts on page 58. I just wanted to highlight the accessory structure in question with a little yellow here so you could see it a little bit more clearly. So the encroachment section here, I'll read it into the record. It says, "Fences, walls, vegetation, poles, and other customary yard accessories, pool decks, ornaments, and furniture may be permitted in any yard subject to height limitations and visibility requirements." Now, the applicant's structure, the accessory structure in question, as I indicate on the top of page 11, it's 231.575 square feet, and it's a height of 10 feet. Now, the applicant, in their narrative, indicates that this structure is a customary yard accessory. Now, based on that definition that I, again, on the top of page 11, staff's position is at a 231-square-foot accessory structure at 10 feet is not comparable, it's not similar to a fence, a wall, a vegetation, or pole. These are the examples that are given in the code for a customary yard accessory. In addition, I mentioned that there's pool decks that are referenced here, and I do note in your staff report that in section 30-68F1B, swimming pool decks have to be set back at least four feet from the rear or side lot lines. And then with regards to ornaments and furniture, these are typically not permanent things, right? Ornaments, Christmas ornaments, or whatever type of you, you know, those are typically seasonal. Furniture can be moved in and out, whereas a structure is, is permanent. Now, in addition, the accessory structure in question, it is located four feet from the rear property line. And I do indicate that the, for this particular zoning district, which is residential, single-family, there is a four-foot, excuse me, there is a setback of, or I should say, the accessory structure in question is setback four feet from the rear property line. And I do indicate that in the staff report that there is nothing in the code that allows the structure to encroach into the setback. So here are the permitted encroachments. Now, I do provide these in the middle of page 11. This is the actual language that's in the code. It's, you know, elaborates a little bit more. I made it a little bit more simple and straightforward in your packet here. But again, this particular section reads, "Unless otherwise provided in the code, the following structures are allowed in the side or rear required setbacks as set forth herein." You could see letter F is screen enclosures. And I did want to correct Mr. Marshall. He indicated that screen enclosure per the code cannot be closer than six feet. It's actually five feet. So a screen enclosure can be closer than five feet. Also, at the bottom of page 11, I do talk about the dune walk- Um, also at the bottom of page 11, I do talk about the dune walkover because, um, in the applicant's narrative, they do reference the dune walkover. And I provided here what the code says about dune walkover. I highlighted for emphasis, it says in the code, section 38 dash 68I, a dune walkover structure shall comply with the setbacks of the zoning district in which, um, it's located. Now, again, there are two exceptions here. Um, if there's a beach access easement or a similar easement that exists, which would allow construction of such structure and an alternative, alternative location as determined by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which results in less damage to affected coastal dune, uh, and vegetation. Now, um, the applicant, again, in their narrative, talks about cabanas, talks about gazebo's. I just want to make it clear, in the town of Highland Beach, you can have a cabana, you can have a gazebo. But again, there's nothing in the code that allows those particular structures to encroach. So you can have them, but you do have to comply with the building setback. Um, I've put up here what the code says about cabanas. This is section 30 dash 68 F3. It basically provides you some provisions if you're going to have a cabana. Cabanas associated with swimming pools or ocean bathing shall comply with the following limitations. Single story not exceed 150 square feet. Facilities for independent cooking, eating, sleeping are prohibited. Water, electricity and facilities for sanitation are permitted. There's no reference here about the, uh, the cabana can encroach the setback. In addition, the code provides a, a definition for cabana, which is listed there. Those are the only two provisions that talk about cabana. With regards to gazebo, the code only talks about gazebo's in terms of a definition, which is provided there. And as Mr. Marshall indicated, the town code does reference gazebo's. But if it's a temporary structure, which is not the case here, this is not a temporary structure. This is a permanent structure. So again, these are items that are allowed in the code. You can have these, but you do have to comply with the building setback. Um, we also have some regulations in the code. Uh, Mr. Marshall alluded to this as well. With regards to accessory marine facilities, we have a marine site setback. So I wanted to make you aware of that. Um, and these are just some additional definitions. I'll be glad, uh, to address any questions that you all might have on this request.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, we, I have some questions. I just want to get some timeframe on this thing and see if I have the right understanding. On September 13th, a permit was applied for. On December 22nd, uh, there was a code violation that the structure had been built without a permit. On January 9th, the permit was rescinded. The application, excuse me, the application, the permit was rescinded. On March 12th, code enforcement levied a fine. On April 1st through the 4th, at that time, several letters were sent in by other residents saying they had no problem with it. My issue, I, I, I was trying to understand Mrs. Mr. Marshall's testimony with that. And I, I just, I, I wish I could say I go along with it. I've listened to what Ms. Allen has to say. If this thing had been permitted and built and there was an issue with setback at that point, it'd be a different situation. But I, this is supposed to, you're claiming this is a lawn accessory and doesn't need a permit.
No, 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 no. No, it does need a permit. We absolutely said it needs.
But you're calling to something, what I'm saying is, I am listening to Ms. Allen and I believe she is correct. And that's my view. I can't speak for my other board members, but if anybody else has any questions, I welcome them.
Yeah. Um, good morning. I, I do have a couple of questions for both, uh, both of you. Uh, is it a matter of semantics or is there a specific regulatory distinction between a pergola and a gazebo or a cabana? I mean, the initial application had a pergola. And, you know, reading between the lines, you came into the picture and you thought that that was not a proper term for some reason, right? And, 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 and does it, is there a distinction other than semantics?
Well, so I, I would say that it's important because, you know, I could, I could submit an application. It's, it's kind of, I don't know if any of you are familiar with like court pleadings. I know the county attorney would be. I can file a pleading with the judge and call it something. And then if what I'm asking for is something else, well, it doesn't like, I can misname it, right? It is what it is. And so in this case, it was called a pergola and that's fine. You can call it a pergola. But when you try to look to see how pergolas are treated in the code, you won't find it. So it's like, well, it's gotta be, you gotta try to find how it fits in the code, right? This structure, oh, there. And then that's whenever I got involved and I said, well, it's one of two things. It's either a screen enclosure or it's a gazebo. And it really fits the definition of gazebo perfectly. I would think that in the normal case, that when, uh, uh, local government gets an application like that and it's mislabeled, that they would say in like a review comment, that this is, you know, under our code, this is a gazebo. So we've modified your permit application to reflect that you're requesting the permit for a gazebo, right? And not just all of a sudden let it go down some, some wild path because you've got some term that doesn't exist in the code. And so now we're just left with saying, well, we can't find the regulations, so we're just going to assume one. And I, and I know that staff keeps saying there's nothing in the code that allows the gazebo to encroach. But I would submit to you, there are lots of structures though, that are allowed at different setbacks. You heard four feet for swimming pool decks, right? Five feet for screen enclosures. Dune walkover structures, it does specifically say principal setbacks, but then it adds maybe waived. Maybe waived, and that was our point. It may be adjusted by the building official during the permit process. All of these things have specific regulatory language. That's what is the responsibility of government to do when they're regulating land is to have specific language that regulates it clearly and not arbitrarily. But, but gazebo's doesn't have it. And so to say it's not allowed in the setback, well, it's not prohibited either. Like the code doesn't, doesn't say you can't have it in the yard. Right? It just doesn't say. It doesn't say. And so you can't just write a requirement into the code. Your, 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 you know, your town council has to adopt specific code language and they can still do that if that's the desire. But my point is that when you read this code, it doesn't exist. And you can, at that point in time, you have to, you have to use canons of interpretation and, and sometimes that, you know, it, it's not just, oh, well, we, we don't have an answer, so we're just going to fall back on the principal setback.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Marshall? Is this structure electrified too?
It, it, it is, like, it is.
Was there a permit applied?
I don't believe it's connected currently. Right.
Okay. But what was it set up with a permit to electrify? And, and a permit was applied for that?
Mr. Chairman, if, if you're going to ask questions of the, of this gentleman, he needs to be on the mic so it's recorded. I'm sorry, I didn't know your name. Yeah, go ahead and, and state it on the, on the record.
My name is Frank Bishoda.
Okay. So I'm saying, was there a permit applied for?
We, we applied for the permit.
No, on the electrify.
Uh, we didn't get that far. We, it got.
So, so no permit was applied for?
No.
So after the structure was built.
Right.
Electricity was then put in.
It was part of the, when they installed the whole thing, it was part of their package.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Was, was this, uh, structure always a freestanding structure or were there original, uh, designs that attached it to the building?
I have a design where it was like cantilevered off the, off the building. It's always, yeah, been freestanding.
Always been freestanding.
You know, and the, the discussion with staff too. I mean, look, it's a, this is, you know, we've had discussions with staff where they've staff said, well, you need a variance. Well, again, you know, that requires you to assume, in order to say, well, I need a variance, you, you know, you've got to point to a requirement that you're varying from. And I can't, like, it's a, it's, it's a requirement that they're arriving to by default. Which, you know, I just submit is not proper. I don't think it's consistent with Florida law. And I don't think it offends your code either. Because your code, like I said, it allows things like dune walkover structures that could be substituted discretion of staff is where they're located in, in, in those situations for environmental concerns and for considerations to the natural environment. Same thing with, with gazebo's. You know, you have site triangle requirements, height requirements, and then staff, if, you know, if it's next to someone's house, which this isn't, this is along the intercoastal. It's, it's not, again, none of the neighbors have any problem with it. So it's not as if though your code, you're, you're not really handcuffed by your code at all. Your code has tools in it that you could use that could lead to like, what, what is the just result here?
Ms. Allen, just a question for you.
And Mr. Marshall, this is really questions and you keep getting back into your argument. So let, let's try to keep it to the questions.
So do we have any others?
Yeah, Mr. Marshall. So, uh, you said no neighbors? Had brought up any? Now, every neighbor we've spoken to has indicated support and I believe we have at least a dozen of them that signed letters of support that should be in the agenda package.
Of 14?
14, yeah.
The other, we, we didn't have been allowed it, but with putting the original house plans, it would still, it would still be going over the setback, right?
Yeah, it would, it would have to be 20 feet, which is where the house is. So the original plans wouldn't have worked. You had to carve out part of the house to put the gazebo there.
And just for another viewpoint, well, and, and it's, it's not necessarily relevant, um, to this, but what would insurance consider it? If, if, God forbid, a hurricane hit, would it be considered part of the, the main structure? Or would it be considered an accessory if it's not, if it's not attached?
Yeah, it'd be considered an accessory structure.
Okay.
I mean, of course, you know, it's a good point, you know, that's why we want, you know, the building permit issued. We wanted to go through the inspection process because at the end of the day, it needs to be properly permitted and on the ground for insurance purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I, I just, I had another thing. The difficulty I'm having is the building department says, this is incorrect, that, that this should not be. The town planner says the same thing. Uh, code enforcement went into that. I'm troubled by that. That's my problem. I, I just, I have to agree with the town. And I, again, I can't speak for any other board member, but I'm struggling with it.
We, we understand. Like, one of the best things I learned in law school is that, you know, reasonable people disagree all the time. And, you know, and we just have a different interpretation. Staff, you know, I, you know, staff's interpretation would require every gazebo in town to get a variance unless you carved out part of your main structure for a gazebo. You'd need a variance for a gazebo.
But in, but in the same respect.
And there were gazebo, and there, there were other structures like this in town. I, in the PowerPoint we had, it may be, they may have printed my PowerPoint.
No, I didn't print it.
Yeah, there was an image of, of one. So, you know, that, but again, you know, that, that's why we're, this is an interpretation. It's like, this is, you know, it's natural that there's, that, that that we're on a different page than staff. I totally get that.
If, if this was, if this was approved, wouldn't that set a precedent for anybody who wanted to put what they call a gazebo up without a permit?
No, no, no. You need a permit. 100% need a permit. And that's what we're saying. We're just saying that where you, like, when you submit a plan and you showed a gazebo in, in your yard, that there's not a X setback requirement that automatically applies. Because there isn't one in the code. There isn't one. It's not six feet. It's not eight feet. It's not 20 feet. It's not one in the code at all. And so it would be subject to, you know, staff reviewed and, and they'd have to make sure obviously that it's, um, you know, that it's attached to the ground. It means all building code requirements. It means all the UFLIP's, uh, requirements for strength, you know? And, and it's located in the place, not in the site triangle. It doesn't exceed the height limits and it's not in a place that staff would consider in their opinion, you know, would be disruptive to, to adjacent properties. Right? But I'm not saying you can't get a permit. You have to get a permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Right. The issue is whether the, the setback applies.
Yeah, and what is the setback?
Whether it could be located in the rear setback.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question for Ms. Allen? So when you look at regulations, there, there is generally a legislative history behind the regulation, why, why it was written in the way it was written? What, and, and so I, I'm putting aside the interpretation of the language, which is critical, but I'm putting that aside for this question. What, what is the harm to, to the community that allowing this structure, um, to, to stay would cause?
With regards to the harm, that, that is not the role of staff. Staff is here to implement the code. Right? So, um, there's not any criteria in the code as far as any, uh, I mean, there's always a safety and wellbeing, right? Uh, we want to promote the safety, wellbeing of residents, but there's nothing in the code that has a criteria for any type of accessory structure, if there's any, you know, issue there. Um, but I, I do want to say that, um, in the survey that was provided by the applicant, which is, um, on page 58 of your packet, you could see that they identified the accessory structure here as an open walled roof accessory structure. You were talking about semantics earlier. So, um, let's say we did have in the code that a pergola can encroach by feet into the setback. And they submitted an application with an open walled roof accessory structure. That would be comparable to a pergola and they would go ahead and be able to do it. You know, planners are always looking at the code and when people submit things, we're trying to figure out, okay, is there something in the code that's comparable? Right? People, um, I mean, Highland Beach is a small town, but people often will come up with a lot of new types of uses. There's a lot of hybrid uses out there. So people come in with applications and the town planners are trying to figure out, okay, is there anything comparable to this hybrid use that's in the code that we can use? So I just wanted to address that because you talked about the semantics. Um, as I said, you can have a gazebo, you can have a dune walkover. A dune walkover is very clear. You have to comply with the setbacks. However, there are some exceptions. Um, so again, staff is here to implement the code. The code doesn't allow for an encroachment. Um, whether you could, some people will argue, well, you can't see it from the street. And that is fine, but that's not what the code says. The code doesn't say, well, if you can't see it from the street, no, the code doesn't say that. So we are here to implement what the code says. That's all. That is our role.
If you want to.
Yeah, if, you need to be sworn in if you weren't sworn in.
Raise your right hand. By the authority vested in me as a notary of the state of Florida, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
And again, I'm, well, the, the presentation's over. Does the board have a question for the, well, if the board wants to hear from the applicant, that's fine.
All right. I, I have no problem with it if, if it's acceptable.
That's absolutely fine.
Thank you. My name is Steve Garchik. So we recently renovated the house and decided that it made sense to have a summer kitchen outside. So we got that, fortunately, we got that permitted early and properly. And Frank didn't have cancer, so we didn't run into the problem with the second permit. And when we realized we were building this thing, of course, everybody on our side of the street in the afternoon faces west. And that's when the sun's the strongest, the heat's the greatest. So we said, you know, and you're welcome to look. I don't know how many houses down the street. Is it like five houses down the street? There's three of these, two or three of these same structures. Now, I'm not a code person, you know, I don't want to get into any of that, but there's similar structures that existed. So we said, okay, let's design one that gives us protection from rain and, you know, some protection from the heat because we put a fan inside. That was our, that was our goal. That was our plan. Uh, I understand a cabana can't be more than 10 by 15 when I've heard we're not, we can't qualify as a cabana because we have electric. But the other thing in terms of its size is we're on a double lot. Okay. So while, you know, if you have an 80-foot wide lot, you know, 10 by 15 sounds pretty big. When you're on a 200-foot lot, it didn't seem like our 15 by 15 structure seemed out of proportion with everything else. So we went ahead, we asked Frank to permit it. He got sick. And, you know, the rest is history in terms of, you know, why we're here and all the meetings we've had and the like. And I apologize. We've apologized to the town. We've offered to pay a fine and all these kinds of things to put the permit issue aside and just say, okay, what are these people just trying to do? Okay, we've lived here for six years. We spent, what did we spend? $50,000 on new drainage? And if you drive by our house today, you'll see half of it's been dug up by the state doing that work. Whoever's doing the work ripped it right up and, you know, are redoing their own drainage. Okay, fine. That's water over the dam. But all we were trying to do is get some protection from rain and the sun above the summer kitchen we did. That's it. And if there's some way to amend the code rather than interpret it how it reads today, we'd appreciate your indulgence to allow us to do that. Because we're not trying to hurt anybody. We're not trying to harm anybody. Nobody sees it. All the neighbors have no objection to it. They don't even know why we're here, but that's not really the point. The point is you have to do your job and we'd appreciate your help in figuring out a solution that'll allow the structure to stay and exist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just put it this way. Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I could, I, I could like, we'll, we'll conclude this by saying that we, we do not want you to believe that we think that people can just go up and build gazebo's at their will. They need, it needs to be permitted. It needs to go through a plan permit process. We're just saying that because of the ambiguity in the code, because of the lack of express setback that applies to gazebo's, which is a defined term. So you not have to worry about semantics. It's a gazebo. Gazebo is defined. So we're actually working with the term as it's defined in the code. What it is, doesn't have a specific setback requirement. That would mean if you were to just follow the default rule, all we're saying is that it, it should be permitted and it may be permitted. And as we stand today, rather than the additional step, the additional regulatory step to resolve an ambiguity in favor of requiring the additional process of going through a variance for every person that wants to do. to resolve an ambiguity in favor of requiring the additional process of going through a variance for every person that wants to do a pergola. It's in their yard. That is resolving an ambiguity in, that against the landowner, requires more process. It's more application, more application fees, there's more risk. Variances, you know, are, you know, are, is, you know, they're not always easy to prove up, right? Whereas you resolve the ambiguity in the system of Florida law in favor of the landowner, then, then you can move forward with permitting the pergola. And that's what we're saying you should do is to move forward with permitting it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other board members that have any comments?
I have a question.
It's all.
Okay, so thank you. Mr. Marshall, I think, I'm sorry if I got that wrong. You said there are a lot of similar structures around, right? Yeah, now, now, a question for the building department. Is that, are they similar enough to establish precedent?
I don't know what structures they're speaking of.
And if you want to hear from the building official.
Yeah, Jeff, did you want to?
Well, good morning. Jeffrey, my building official, town of Highland Beach. The first thing that I would like to do is just some points of clarification, all right? The first item is that this is not a gazebo. The Florida statutes, the Florida building code specifically identifies this as a sun control structure. Because the purpose of it is to provide shade. So it's a sun control structure. And the very definition of a sun control structure begins with an accessory structure consisting of columns and so on. So I want to make sure that, you know, I keep hearing gazebo, 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 muddying the waters, clouding things up a little bit. It is an accessory structure which is regulated by setbacks, okay? It is not, so I just want to make sure that we're firmly clear that this is an accessory structure. When you build a home, when you buy a home, at some point, whoever built that home decided that they wanted to build that home all the way to the rear setback. And the town allows you to do that. But when you do that, you accept limitations. Well, now I can have a pool back there, I can have a pool deck, dock, seawall, boat lift. But there are certain things that you can't encroach. So this is where we run into problems, is where people are now want to just keep moving and moving and moving. So I just wanted to make that point because this isn't being presented for the purposes of a variance. The purpose of this is to say that, oh, this is a yard accessory. In other words, we don't have to comply with a setback. That is extremely dangerous ground that we're walking on when you make that decision. Because you are now setting precedents where people are going to call whatever, that when they have something that's clearly defined in the Florida building code by Florida statute as a sun control structure, which is an accessory structure. Now everyone's just going to say, and it's going to create a whole other issue. It's not a screen enclosure. It's a sun control structure which is an accessory structure which is regulated. In the future, if the town wants to change the ordinance and change the setbacks, that's great, but right now they're not asking for a variance. Could have asked for a variance. Said, hey, yeah, we have a structure, this is what it is, we want a variance, but they're trying to just say, we can do what we want. We can put it wherever we want on our property because we don't have to comply with setbacks because it clearly encroaches into the setback, which is what I'm hearing from Mr. Marshall. So I just wanted to clarify that this is a sun control structure, which is an accessory structure. The home is built all the way as far as it can go, and that unfortunately limits the size. You want to put a smaller sun control structure, put a smaller one that fits, that meets the setback. No one's saying you can't do it. You just have to meet the requirements, but throwing this out, trying to say that this is some sort of a yard accessory is opening up all of the town for people to take advantage of that and use this as precedence. And we have enough issues in this town to begin with, with boats, boat lifts, heights of seawall, we're getting a lot of complaints. So it's not just people there, it's people who live on the canals and so on and so forth. So just want to remind that this is not for, you know, like, the purpose of them being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. She was sworn in.
I'm over like Arctic.
Hi.
I, I just want to say that we're not trying to get away with anything. That, that's not true, and I don't appreciate you saying that because that's not us, okay? We follow rules, follow the guidelines, everything that the town has asked us to do when we have been renovating our home. As my husband said, we spent $50,000 just to help with the, whatever the word is for the water, whatever. That's been dug up right now, the driveway having to be redone to, to match every code that we have been asked to do. Anyway, the other thing is, so as far as the structure, whatever the word is that whoever is looking for whatever word, whatever you call it, at the end of the day, yes, it is a sun structure because we want it to cover the sun when I'm outside barbecuing and it's very hot at 5 o'clock when the sun is over the barbecue. So that was the point. I just said to my husband, can we get that when we're redoing our kitchen? And then we, outside, and that's how it started, and the permit was not, we registered for the permit or applied, whatever it is later than it should have been, and then there was, you know, an issue, whatever, with, with Frank. But so we're trying to follow the rules. We've, we've disconnected the electric. That we did not know that that was not allowed, so we disconnected the fan and the lights around it. So now at night, I just barbecue with my phone, you know, but it's, it's not like we're doing anything to harm anybody or hurt anybody intentionally. We didn't try to get, we didn't try to get away with anything. It was like, oh, we're going to go try to do that. That's not correct. The other thing is there are structures in Delray across from the intercoastal, so their guidelines must be completely different. I get it. But when you go up and down the intercoastal, even in Highland Beach, a few houses down, there's at least three other structures that are very similar. I don't know the setbacks. I know our, our cover is within the baluster. If you look at the pictures, you can see the railing, the pools are in front of our balusters, so our balusters are there. And then if you also look at our pool, it's the same, it's like, here's our, here's where the structure is. And our pool is the same, like, setback. So it's just, again, we're not trying to get away with anything. We would like to, I think Mr. Marshall had said something about a variance. We would like to apply for that once we would, I guess, whatever happens. But I don't know, we just want a solution. We want to be able, I mean, to do something or come up with something that we can still use it.
Thank you. But before you make comment, I want to make comment to the board. No, you know what? It's a beautiful structure. You seem like nice people, but that's not the issue. The problem we have here is our building, the head of our building department and our town planner said, this is incorrect, this is not correct. And that's what this is about. It's going to, you know, and all of these meetings that we've had with many people, you want to help people, you want to do variance. But this is, this is more black and white. It's not a matter of, you know, agreeing or disagreeing. I, I mean, I, I have to go with what, this is for me, and I, the other members may think differently. But this is a matter of the town planner and the head of the building department and code enforcement saying, this is one thing. And the town stands to the other, you stand to the other. So, I mean, it's just, that's how we have to vote.
The issue why this really boils down to, and I, and I think everything that the building official said, this is an accessory structure. That's the point I've been making. It is an accessory structure. It meets the definition gazebo. Gazebo is among other accessory structures. And so the question before you, really, the decision, your decision today is, do gazebos unlike other accessory structures? Do gazebos always need a variance, right? All these other accessory structures are allowed in the yard, obviously, and they're at different setback requirements. Like I said, they, it's, but for some reason, the code is going to treat pergulas different than any other accessory structure. And so anytime you have a pergola, you need a variance, but you don't need a variance for, for, you don't need a variance for cabanas, for dune walkover structures. I don't need for, for pools, for, for fences, for walls, for all these other accessory structures. I don't need variances for them because they have setback requirements in the code. Gazebo is just silent. And so that's my point, is that to have a setback requirement, you have to read that into the code. And by reading that into the code, you're forcing that particular accessory structure to the exclusion of all others. To always have to go through this additional regulatory process to have a variance to exist. I'm saying, so that's really what it boils down to. We're not saying, oh, you can't have these. I mean, my point is that obviously the code allows these. It allows all kinds of accessory structures. So without having to get a variance for where it's placed. So that's really what it boils down to. I mean, you know, we're not, it's not like life or death, anything like that, you know? And so, and that helps us, right? I think that maybe that would help you. You know, we're, we're not trying to make some crazy argument that, you know, that, oh, we could never do this. No, we, it's just a matter of the process.
Thank you.
Right? And that's why the code enforcement board has given us time to figure out is, what is the process? Is it, can we go ahead and just get a permit? Or do we need to go through a variance? If that's the case, it's going to be the case, because that's going to be the precedent, that every pergola, unlike other accessory structures, is going to need a variance.
Okay, thank you. Well, whatever the, the outcome of the vote is on this, I hope that everything can eventually get worked out, but we have to vote on what's up here. So does anybody have any other comments?
Well, Mr. Marshall, modifying your last statement, I guess, every structure that's similar to this kind of structure that's, that doesn't have the appropriate setback would require a variance, right? Not, not just the fact that you're building one.
Yeah, pergola is being regulated as a principal structure. So it was, it's being subjected to the principal setback. So unlike other accessory, even though it's an accessory structure, it's being regulated as a principal structure. It's under the staff's interpretation.
Anybody else have any comments?
Does the city know if there has been any prior requests for variances for this type of structure, and were they approved?
Um, I've been here almost five years. I don't recall a variance for a similar type structure.
I've been doing board of adjustment for about nine years. No, I don't believe we've had one before.
And if I just may add, because Ms. Garchik made, made the comment about there may be other structures in the town. In this town, we have a lot of non-conforming structures, whether they're legal, non-conforming. But that, that is not a justification to continue to create, you know, a non-conformity. So we, we have a lot of non-conforming boat lifts, we have a lot of non-conforming, we have some non-conforming docks. We have all kinds of structures that may be in the setback, but again, they may have gotten a building permit back in the day for it. It may have been given to them in error, but they have a permit, so it's a legal non-conformity. Again, that's not a justification to allow something to encroach that the code doesn't allow or permit.
Thank you. Any other comments from anybody? Well, I would like to make a motion to deny the applicant, and anybody has any other motions? Anybody want to second it, or anybody want to discuss it?
I'm inclined to, you know, agree with the town on, on, you know, especially after what Jeff said that, you know, so I, I can second it.
Okay, all in favor of deny?
We're gonna, no, we're gonna have to roll call it. So there's a motion to uphold staff's interpretation and deny the appeal, correct?
Right.
And that was the chair, and it was seconded. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, roll.
So Chairperson Rosen.
I say deny it.
Chair, Board Member Thorson. And Member, a moment, Member Gordon.
Sir, against the motion. So that would be a nay.
And Secretary Rosen.
I guess, can I ask a question to counsel? We, we talked about a variance. What, what would be the process?
It's a different process. Yeah, they would have to, so to get a variance, they would have to apply for a variance. It would come back before this board. But it's a different procedure, different criteria.
I see. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, I would vote for the motion.
Okay, and Member Weiss?
I'll vote for the motion.
Okay, and that's it.
That's it.
That's it.
The motion is passed.
Motion carries to deny, right?
No.
The motion to deny the appeal carries four to one.
Four to one, yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Again, hopefully this can change. I mean, I hope so, but yeah, yeah, I, I, like I say, this was for me a tough one. I'm, I really feel missed the motions on it, but I have to go with what the town put out there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's. Yeah, we need, we need to adjourn. We can't, we shouldn't be talking about this anymore. The hearing's over.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
Now, hopefully.
Yeah, so I'll give you an order.
Okay.
Make it out of the chairs, then.